Well, Bill, you had a really great fade in. That was really, really awesome.
I know it's my older computer and it's just like the screen's like so black and it's just like, especially this time of night with dusk if I'm standing in front of the window.
Yeah, oh my gosh, that was. Uh, that was so cool.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hail the great Susan Ald.
Hi.
Hello.
All right.
Bruins are coming on.
I know. I'm going Thursday night. I'm really excited.
Lucky you.
The first game, I haven't been to a game in probably like four or five seasons, so I'm excited.
Oh. Yeah, I guess I haven't. Oh, no, I went, I went, when did I go? I think I went this year with my son.
Okay, yeah, well. Yeah.
We did in the fall.
Well, I remember you chasing football. That was funny.
Yes, that was, that was a lot of fun.
Very cool.
Yes, that was a lot of fun. Now I'll have to go to Vegas to see if Jimmy G's playing, right?
Right.
Right.
Well, because you were at, you went to the forty Niners game and then you went to the.
Vegas game.
Vegas Raiders, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Jimmy G wasn't playing against Tom Brady because he got hurt.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, he's not playing.
No.
Yeah, all right.
Did you watch the town council meeting last night?
I sure did. I was, I did the public participation part at the beginning.
Oh, you did? Oh, I didn't see the beginning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a good meeting.
Yeah, I liked what they presented on Main Street.
Mm hmm. Yes.
I like to. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to comment on the architectural design and that is only one story above, but it seems like there's an opportunity to have something a little nicer architecturally speaking. The aesthetic of those like very flat looking bay windows just doesn't do it for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just look like stickers.
It reminded me of the, the windows that are above animal attraction on Main Street.
Yep. Or if you go on Albion and that right, that brick building on the right, as soon as you turn on to Albion from Maine, um, that has like the brick and the copper was for sale like a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Those bay windows are beautiful, just. But that just didn't look right for some reason. I don't know.
It reminded me of Main Street and I said, oh, well, that would be nice if they continued it down there.
Yeah. Oh. I'd like to say anything would look better, but at the same time, it's like, if you have the opportunity to really.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is any realty the current owner? Of the.
Not sure.
That's not who I have.
Okay.
I have a gentleman's name.
Yeah, he's the same one person that did. Was it when Attorney McGreal was presenting or, yeah. The Joe, can you remember his name? Yeah.
Is that his son that was with him before?
Yeah, Andreas Seiters.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Welcome. Uh, Jim and and Matt and Jim. Uh, I've already made you co-hosts, so I'm at least ahead of the game on on that score. We'll, uh, we'll give, uh, Megan another minute or two. Matt and Jim, uh, anything exciting in your day to day?
It's always exciting, Theo. Don't you know that?
There you go, right. Too much work to do. Too many, too many diapers to to do.
I'm just glad that this meeting is tomorrow and stuff, uh, is tonight instead of tomorrow because I'll be in Charlotte. So that will be less than ideal doing it from a hotel room.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, boy. Well. Not that you'll be able to get there, but Lexington, North Carolina is known as the one of the, the barbecue meccas, so. All right, let's, uh, let's call ourselves to order. Today is March twenty eighth. Just meeting of the planning board and just real quick, uh, let's take attendance. Jim Hogan.
Here.
Matt Lowery.
Yeah.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
And myself here, so. Got a quorum and thank you, Susan, for being here as well. The and the second item on our agenda is, uh, to approve the minutes. Um, first off, uh, the minutes from March fourteenth. Uh, I trust everyone's reviewed them. Does anyone have any edits or can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March fourteenth as presented.
Second.
All right, all right. All right, all in favor? Uh, Jim Hogan?
Yes.
Matt Lowery?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, all right. And, uh, the second, uh, meeting minutes from, uh, our, our meeting on March twenty first. The, uh, you captured, uh, our twenty minute meeting, um, in, in great six six fashion, Susan. Thank you very much. Um, does anybody have any edits? Or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
All right.
Okay.
All right, um, and all in favor, uh, Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, so that's terrific. The, uh, the third item on our agenda is to, I think, get everybody's feedback on uh, our March twentieth, uh, meeting with the bylaw review committee and, um, our understanding of the bylaw review process. And I did want to, um, sort of uh, focus our discussion on three topic areas. One, um, what are our planning board priorities, uh, that we see? Um, what do we think is, uh, sort of the, the appropriate process? And then I think, um, any other concerns or comments that, that y'all have, um, that we have about, uh, the, the bylaw reviews, uh, uh, the zoning bylaw review. So, um, do we want to start? Where should we start? Do you want to talk about process first or I think, uh, start to itemize any significant priorities that, that we want to make sure that they, they review?
Well, I think, um, Theo, if you don't mind, um, I'd like to go over the process and timeline first to see what, and maybe as a board tonight decide how do we want to partake? Will it be all board members? Should we have one? Um, I, I just think as a board, we should decide on that moving forward. As far as the content and the time, it's I was really impressed with the presentation and understanding the amount of work that has and respect the amount of work that needs to, to be completed. Um, yeah, so I, I would say for tonight, it would be great for us as a board to figure out um, a timeline. How do we want to attend the meetings? How do we want to track that? Um, yeah, that's my first thought.
All right. Well, let's yeah, let's start with, uh, what we understand uh, their process, um, and yeah, how we want to participate. I'm going to get tomorrow.
Um, Mr. Sheriff, Mr. Sheriff, I mean.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so I went back and, and re-listened to the presentation from Attorney Brumbrowski and kind of wrote, uh, uh, for lack of that term, a set of meeting minutes just for my own edification of what they, how he was proposing on, uh, the, the process. And I, I, I pushed it over to yourself and Aaron right before this meeting. Um, yeah, I don't know if there's any value in me pulling up kind of my general understanding, just to kind of walk through what Attorney Brumbrowski, um, referenced. Um, or where we can talk about it at a high level in terms of kind of what I heard in terms of what he was communicating as it relates to the, to the different elements that he would, that'd be part of the processes he defined it.
Jim, I think that would be really helpful if you um, if you wanted to fill up that, those notes.
Sure, uh, so. So can you see my screen?
Yeah.
So, uh, obviously this isn't necessarily the cleanest document, but the way that Attorney Brumbrowski seemed to be, uh, shaping the discussion was around kind of three efforts that would be conducted concurrently as part of the recodification and, and they insisted, uh, update the zoning bylaws based on new mass general law status and specific case laws. Some of the examples you referenced were, um, ADUs. There was a recent update from, from a governor as it relates to the bylaws associated with that. Solar seems to be something that is becoming more of a topic within uh, within the commu-, or within the state and then MBT Communities Law, the section three A that I think everyone here is very well aware of. There were some other things that are related to like adult uses, for example, that he mentioned that there were some constitutional cleanup that need to occur. Um, and cannabis, I believe, was another one that he mentioned as a specific one, but those are just the ones I wrote down. Uh, the second component of it would be to resolve internal inconsistencies within the existing bylaws. Sounded like Attorney Brumbrowski would propose that he would identify the inconsistencies and look for guidance from town staff in some manner. And then to fix glary and omissions or incorrect language, which I think speaks for itself. As it relates to as it relates to the specific process, the way that, um, it was proposed by Attorney Brumbrowski was a zoning diagnostic meeting, which was the kickoff that the March twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-three meeting, uh, kind of served that purpose to identify specific elements that zoning board of appeals, planning board, bylaw review committee, and any other, uh, people who attended the meeting, uh, identified. There were a handful of things that were, um, specifically denoted. For example, uh, the mid, mid-rise MR one and MR two districts, but there's language in the bylaw, but it does not correspond to a map. There were a handful of other things specifically, I believe, as related to non-conformities, zoning board, board of appeals identified, but some of that information came back to Attorney Brumbrowski. I'm sure he's going to go through and, and finish that. Um, the way they, from the next, from the next steps, he envisioned four different themed meetings. The theme meetings, according to Attorney Brumbrowski, would be job, just meeting number one, review the job descriptions and the special permit granting authority associated with planning board, zoning board of appeals, the approval granting authority, you know, variances, site plan approvals, special permits, et cetera. And then to review the non-conforming, non-conformity section of the zoning bylaw, which he indicated he identified as requiring a major overhaul. The second theme meeting would be to review the use table and definition coordination. There's a number of uses within our use table that are not defined within our zoning bylaws. And he suggested that there were a number of standard definitions that could be utilized from the state or from, I believe he referenced, um, there's a, there's a document, uh, published by Rutgers Universities that has kind of a overall à la carte menu of different definitions for different uses that are utilized in zoning codes across the United States.
Yeah.
The third meeting would go into kind of a review of residential uses and special considerations. ADUs, residential overlays, cleaning up. I, I'm guessing this is where he would want some guidance from town uh, stakeholders as it relates to minimum lot sizes, density, parking, those types of elements related to residential use only. And then the last theme meeting would be, uh, review regulations and commercial uses. And specifically, some of the el- elements that you referenced regulations would be parking requirements for commercial loading dock signage, landscaping requirements. And then some of the performance standards which, um, are materially absent from our bylaws, but there's others, other communities that have them related to things such as noise, light pollution. After those four theme meetings are completed, he anticipated that and he solicited the relevant feedback from the town. He'd go away, quote, go away for a month, put his head down and uh, create a color-coded, uh, first draft of a bylaw review change. And then he mentioned, you know, there'd be a second and a third draft and then potentially workshop meetings as defined by the town. He didn't really super get into that. You know, what happens in the back half after these theme meetings, but that's kind of the, the, the process that he laid out in terms of the timeline. Uh, it seemed as if the bylaw review committee and Attorney Brumbrowski had slightly different thoughts in terms of where that would be. Uh, Attorney Brumbrowski said it would take, quote, at least until spring of next year, although it sounded like that would be a stretch goal for if he was in charge of the, the timeline definition. Um, but seemed like the bylaw review committee was targeting more of a fall twenty-four or spring twenty-five town meeting to have kind of an up or down vote on the recodification process. So that, that's just my take from what I heard and going through and trying to organize the different thoughts, but that's, that's at least the, the takeaways that I had. And I'm more than happy to distribute this, or maybe I suggest the chair distribute it to the balance of the planning board if you think it's appropriate.
Yeah, that's. I'll, I'll definitely pass that along to everyone, um. Yeah, I, um, I think we were talking about it and I did not, um, really fully understand the, the feedback loop from the ZBA and planning board, uh, to the bylaw review committee and, and, uh, how that, that would happen. So presumably we would receive the memos, attend the bylaw review committee, uh, have a discussion on our own and then uh, subsequent and subsequent meetings bring, bring those same comments back. Um, which is yeah, I think the reason for all, all of those iterative drafts and things like that, um, which seems a little, uh, uh, two-piece, two-piece meal for me.
If I would, uh, Mr. Chairman, the
Yeah.
My, my, my feedback would be one, I think that we've identified as a town, the right resource. Attorney Brumbrowski seems to highly qualified is, is the right resource for this zoning recodification. I, I would advocate that we engage with the bylaw review committee, potentially the zoning board of appeals and CONCOM to kind of define what some of these feedback loops are. Um, Attorney Brumbrowski had all these different theme meetings and I think there's a lot of structure to how he thinks in terms of how this goes, but I, I think that a lot of it's really up to the town. And I think as the board, planning board who, um, you know, is the steward of the by, the zoning bylaws on a more day-to-day basis and the ZBA who's engaging with it in a material fashion based on their reviews of projects. I think it would make a lot of sense to find a way to have a conversation with the bylaw review committee in terms of if there's going to be deliverables in advance of these theme meetings to kind of start thinking about some of these elements and, and providing guidance. You know, what does that timeline, when that guidance from Attorney Brumbrowski come out? And then what are the roles or how are the, the, those feedback loops from those relevant bodies to the bylaw review committee going to work in order to ensure that the, um, you know, some of these, you know, I think in contrast to what we initially thought, I think there are going to be some public policy decision-making that's going to have to occur as part of this, you know? I think of some of the things he was mentioning in terms of defining who the special permit granting authority is. You know, that's the policy decision that I think should be dictated by planning board within consultation with the ZBA and potentially the bylaw review committee, but I don't believe that it would be appropriate to, to have the bylaw review committee adjudicate that those types of decisions. So I think there's a feedback loop that we should probably define and on the front end to make sure that all parties are in alignment in terms of how the process is going to run. And I would advocate, we probably should try to have some sort of, you know, all boards meeting for lack of a better term in the near term, discuss what those feedback loops look like.
Uh, I, I, I think that's really helpful. Um, um, Bill, Matt, or Aaron, any, any comments? Uh, thoughts, you know, based on past experience?
Well, uh, Mr. Chair, just to really speak to our, our job as a planning board in this matter. And I'm, thank you, Jim, for going back and outlining this. It's very helpful. Um, I would like to have our board be as prepared and proactive as possible. And to Jim's point, how do we as a board or a liaison from our board meet with the bylaw committee, a bylaw review committee to make sure that there's well, what Jim has outlined here, the, the bigger points to make sure that they're not missed or that as a board, we're not out of the discussion. And I, I guess the toughest thing that I can't figure out and this, after the meeting, I thought about this and I guess when we want to talk about timeline, I, I want to find out like, how do we as the planning board hold public participation, reviews, um, information sharing, um, if, if we're the conduit for that? I don't think we can wait to the end and say, here it is. What's the review? I, I, I was thinking similar to how Jim has here. Is it, is it each themed meeting that we take the bigger pieces of that? And once the bylaw review committee meeting has, is, is over and we get comments back, do we hold our meetings then with the public for commentary? Or do we wait to the end? I guess that's the biggest thing I wanted to decide tonight is like, how do we um, get this information out? So there's comments and feedback from the public.
Yeah.
Well, if I can interject, is, is that our responsibility to sell what the bylaw review committee is, is doing and to educate the public or is it theirs?
Good question.
So, you know, ultimately it's going to come before the planning board to hold a public hearing. Um, I don't know if we can have public hearings continually through this as the process is being worked out. There, there has to be some kind of, I would believe, some separation between the committee, letting them, you know, do it with input from us or at the end. Um, we give our input and if they, you know, if they choose to take a stand on certain things, then we say we don't agree with this and we don't recommend it. So I, I think that is the, the stick is that they need to get something that is assailable to the town. And I don't know if it's really you know, the appropriate place for the board to be having interim, you know, public hearings on a decision that the bylaw review committee is, is trying to come up with.
So, but Matt, I, I would, the, the thing is, I think that it, it's incumbent upon us to be provoked. So when Attorney Brumbrowski comes forth and says, you know, we can go down path A or path B, you know, I've seen Linfield do a path A and, and Reading do a path B, you know, both are totally valid. It's the public policy choice. I, I would argue that it's our responsibility to be in the loop and/or if not providing the direction in consultation with the other relevant boards and not delegating that direction authority, for lack of a better term, to the bylaw review committee. And so I think that's, that's.
I mean, they've already been directed to do that. That's, that's their authorities to review the bylaws. So um, you know, I it, it's unless it's you know, our authority to do that, I, I think we might be overstepping our bounds on this. Yes, we can give input, but I don't think we should be basically saying, you know, we, we could, we could have a, a public hearing, public meeting, solicit input, give it back to the bylaw review committee and they can reject it out of hand saying, no, we want to go this way. They, they can choose to do that, so. I, I just, I just fear that we don't want to overstep our bounds on this. That's all.
Understood. I think this might be our biggest decision tonight. It's like, how do we want to be represented for this? How do we want to? So is it just like attend the meeting, bring all the information together? Once the, um, workshop meetings, when they're defined and, and we attend those the same as the public does. Um, and then when we start to hold public hearings, would that be after the draft is complete? I, i- is that where it would happen then? If it doesn't happen after each piece, does it happen at the very end that our board would then hold the public hearings? I guess that's the part I want to understand. So we can be prepared.
And, um, truthfully, I, I, I think the best source of this would be Mark himself because he's done this so many times.
Mm hmm.
He would probably be able to, you know, shed more light on what has been done in other towns and, and the appropriate way to do this. So.
Um, can I just chime in? I'm not.
Please.
This, yeah, I see both sides of it. I do. I think I've, um, spoken to Theo and, um, uh, Jim about, I know there are concerns, um, with the process, but honestly, I think eh, from an outsider's perspective, I think we're going too far down and over, you know, I think it's a conversation that needs to be had and what this process looks like. So I do think it's an initial meeting between the chairs of the boards. Um, talking about the process and how you would like it to be or how you would see it being played out and hopefully finding this middle ground because maybe there's just a misunderstanding right now. I know the way that, um, Attorney Brumbrowski explained it, um, but I do think it's worth having a conversation between all the chairs. Because maybe there is a way, um, that you create this working group between the different chairs. I know I was looking at Arlington's whole recodification back in two thousand eighteen. Um, they had a whole working group. Uh, but I don't think they were going through all their bylaws. It was just for zoning. So maybe that's the route we want to go. And it looked like it was representation from both internal staff. Um, could be bylaw reviews, ZBA, uh, the planning board. Um, and that group is the one that's holding these public meetings. I saw that they had a, a public meeting on July thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. But I really think it's just having this initial conversation with Attorney Brumbrowski, um, the chairman of the bylaw review, ZBA, and yourself and possibly CONCOM, um, to see what that looks like before we go too far down this path. That's just, that, that's just what I think.
That's a really good suggestion, um, as well. So, so that, that obviously is the first step. And, uh, is, um, and then I, I, right, and then this, you know, the second is, um, getting a clear, uh, sort of process flow from from Attorney Brub. What, how do you say his last name?
Brubowski.
Okay.
Um, I could drop, I could drop his book off at your house if you want some light reading.
Um, bring it. I got three, uh, housing policy books, uh, in the mail yesterday, so I'm yeah, I'm not getting any sleep. Very happy.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I could just, I, I really appreciate, um, Aaron's, um, comments.
Yeah.
And if that meeting could happen before. If that meeting could happen before. The this, what was the next meeting? Was it April? No, it was the first week of May, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was going to be May first, uh, his first memo was due April twenty fourth.
That's right. Is it possible that a meeting between the chairs of the boards? And, uh, Attorney Broukowski could happen before that first meeting?
Um, definitely.
Okay.
I would, I would think that's very possible, um.
Alright, alright.
So, um. Yeah, um, so that. Yeah, me, yeah, um, yeah, it's, um, I wouldn't, like, if we had the meeting. You know, April twenty first, we would not have another. Planning board meeting for me to publicly share the results until the ninth, which would be after his first meeting. But, I mean. The, uh. I guess most of us might be at the. Their their May first meeting anyway, um, so, um. Alright. Aaron, do you think it's doable, getting? The four of us together before the twenty fourth?
Um, I can't see why not, um. I mean, I could send an email once we get off this meeting, so.
Yeah, alright. Alright.
Yeah, I just from, you know, I just feel like there's a misunderstanding of the roles, what. Um, kind of alluding to what Matt was going, uh, you know, the bylaw review committee was brought on to to review our bylaws, but I understand too that with us, the planning board and. Uh, the ZBA, working with this day in and day out, and myself personally in the building department. Um, any recommendations or, um, things that we're seeing should definitely be taken into account. I'm not too worried about the formatting definitions and things like that, but. Policy, um, I do agree, I think should, um, be a broader conversation amongst board members.
Okay.
I mean, I I'm looking for, I'm looking towards some standardization and definitions and format, because it definitely does make it easier when. Um, when you can go from town to town and and there is some. Some consistency, you'd be surprised that even in definitions, how inconsistent, uh. Everything can be, so straightening that out is good, and there are some ramifications to changing some of our. Definitions too, so. They all need to be looked at to to see, make sure they're consistent, but we have, and. Uh, more importantly. You sometimes get people using newer definitions with older zoning and it gets a little tricky, so. We need to make sure when this is published, there's an actual, you know. It's well documented when this comes out, yeah, so.
Yeah.
I I and I get a lot of, I I work with a lot of younger. Younger folks that tend to just. Google Words and and search documents and don't actually read the whole, the whole thing, I'm sure all you guys. Get that too, so it 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 can be kind of fraught with with some pitfalls on it, so.
Yeah, I I just think the biggest thing from my perspective is that if there are things such as, you know, Attorney Bob Browski was referencing, adding. Language related to solar panels and how to regulate those, or changes in terms of how we're going to. Regulate ADUs or signage, or you know, those types of things, or if they're talking about adding. Noise performance standards or light pollution performance standards, those are the types of things that I would. Strongly advocate that we stake out and we try to, you know, have have a role defined for us as it relates to. Those types of choices, because that's not in my mind like, uh. Oh, we're cleaning up some language and definitions type of thing, which I I agree, Matt, right? If it's cleaning up languages and definitions, then. I don't think we need to insert ourselves into the process, but if it's those type of. Kind of higher level impacts to the underlying intent of the zoning, that's where I think that we, we should try to, you know. Make sure that there's a process for us communicating back and forth with the bylaw review committee. In a manner that's working collaboratively with them to come up with a final product that is better suited for the town.
Yeah, and and I think maybe having some milestone meetings where we actually meet as a, as a board. Um, and we kind of review what has happened in over the past month or two, that way. As an entire board, we can give our input and and give better direction, and then hopefully, you know, going forward, that they need that. At that point, we can document what our concerns are and and what are, as a board, what we feel. Is the proper, you know, is the direction that we all agree upon, if we, if down the road, they don't choose that. Then at least we know, okay, at this point, we gave our input, it went this way. At the final document, if we still don't agree, it can be changed, or, you know, we can voice our. Our opinion at that point, but I I don't know if. When we have these joint meetings, we go forward and we're the ones that have to start basically. Outreach and educating people, I I don't, I don't really see that that is our. You know, part of our task here, or our role, that again, that's just my opinion.
Now, Matt, you see, um, the bylaw review committee being the public feedback. Um, or do you see the planning board as the group that would be getting the public feedback?
Well, uh, I I don't know if they have a.
Or input, sorry, I should say input, not feedback, sorry, yep.
Yeah, I don't know if they have a provision for public participation at at each meeting or how that works.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Hey, uh, Matt, just to interject, interject, it's because you posed that question. Dan Lieber specifically indicated that they were having a forum or a a an opportunity for the public. To provide feedback at the beginning at each point of their meeting specifically related to this task.
Okay, so I I think that kind of answers it, it's, it would be their role to do the initial. You know, education and and then hear from the public.
So it'd be incumbent upon us, uh, I I really like the the milestone meetings and, um. And doing our analysis, and then we are communicating that back to them. At their next meeting with the, you know, through that public engagement, um, as well as. Um, you know, whatever informal or formal letters, etc.
Yeah, Theo, what I would advocate to do if we're going to get a meeting with all all board chairs, for lack of a better term. Uh, I would try to understand what they think in terms of the actual timeline for these theme meetings. I I think what I would advocate for is for us to try to have the board as represented at each of the theme meetings as possible to provide feedback. And then afterwards, we would provide, um, feedback to the, because my guess, right, is that. A lot of the feedback, the theme meetings, and maybe this is a question for Attorney Bumbrowski. But the the intent is to identify issues that need further direction from the town writ large.
Yeah.
And then utilize some sort of meeting between. Whichever relevant parties between, you know, between the different boards that that determine a consensus to then provide Attorney Bumbrowski. If the intent of each of these theme meetings that determine that the the direction on the flyer in those meetings, then maybe that that changes, but. I think that if the intent is to identify and walk through some of the considerations, pluses, minuses. Um, then maybe there's an opportunity for us to have some sort of formalized feedback via a letter. After those theme meetings to help provide our formal guidance in terms of where our course position is.
Mm-hmm. Right, um, I think that's a a really good suggestion for clarification, um. Yeah. Okay, um. Uh, this is a really helpful comment, um, and discussion about process and how we engage with. Uh, the bylaw review committee, um, and with all the other affected, uh. Boards and town departments, uh, because, right, we all want to, um, contribute constructively towards, uh. A much more, uh, standardized and effective, uh, zoning bylaw. Um, what about in terms of our major priorities, uh, for? Uh, I I, you know, for lack, our major priorities for improvements, uh, to the zoning bylaw or. Major areas that, uh, we want to focus on.
I think depending on how far down the rabbit hole we go, I I think that it would. I think there would be a productive conversation around the the size of our minimum lots. I think that in many cases, they're significantly larger than all, basically all the existing housing stock. I think that that's something that is a worthwhile conversation, if we're going to be going through wholesale changes of the, how the entire bylaws organized. That use table and those minimum loss sizes, I think is something that would be pertinent for us to review. Additionally, I would note that the the SSR, the special single residents that have the. Exceptionally large loss sizes comparatively to the balance of the town, something else that I advocate, we. Look at, the problem is that would envision a map change, um, but that also leads into. Another thing that I don't know if I necessarily have an opinion on, but I think is something that we should think about as a board is. If this recodification process is going on, does it make sense for us to also review a potential series of map changes? That could potentially be set forth concurrently with. Or separate, but maybe they're they're tied in some manner and they talk to each other. But set forth map changes to kind of go hand in hand with the zoning recodification. Again, I don't know if I have a strong position on that, but I think that's something that we might want to think about as a board, if we're doing this whole recodification and. Reorganization of everything, maybe it makes sense to tie that in with the map, a a map adjustment in order to be more rational. Which I think a number of people on this board has indicated a a a willing, a willingness and a desire to do. At some point, that the timing of it has been kind of subject to revision.
Yeah.
Uh, Jim, Mr. Chair, if I could speak to Jim's point too about the maps, it's. I mean, we've talked about the Lake zoning district, we've talked about overlay districts, we have a a lot going on now with, um, obviously, the. The housing, so it's, it's like what? Again, what what does? Yeah, we just really want to know tonight, not, I guess it's not critical, like, what is our role going to be moving forward, so? Should we as a board prepare? You, Theo, as the chair, go into these meetings with questions that we're interested in finding the answer to. Um, before we get going on this journey to Matt's point, we don't have to interject at each. Um, section of this, it's, it's maybe all at the end, and we just do our part as. The public hearing and the reviews as we prepare it for, um. And our article, uh, to on town warrant for the meeting, so. Yeah, I just want to be prepared and put the time aside and make sure that we are doing our due diligence to make sure we are. Up all up to speed on what we need to do, so for this meeting that is going to happen, uh, before May first. What do you need from us, Mr. Chair, to prepare? Should we? Each put together questions for you that we want answered, or is it something that you want to draft and then share with us, and we can make comments on it?
Um, why don't, uh, so that, um, I think I've got. A a good sense of questions about process and feedback, um. Uh, so I I can, I can write that up and get get your, your, your edits on, I I do think, um. Us, uh, sort of, I think at the outset saying, you know, here are topic areas that we are are very interested in. And, um, A, we, we have, uh. Suggested edits or changes or or things like that, or we know, uh, will require. This, you know, some time investment to fully understand, uh, the implications of things like, uh, solar. Um, I think, um, and I think that goes back to. Matt's discussion about milestone meetings and be being able to do that, so, um. I would like to build that list of what our priorities are, uh, because then I I think. Um, if we want to be doing. Some research ahead of time and discussions, um, amongst the planning board in our meetings. Um, that would help us, uh, stay ahead for wh- whenever we are going to give that formal input. Um, so I think, I think, um. Yeah, if if we want to take a couple more minutes and and come up with what we think are our priorities, I think that would really be helpful. Um. Um, I think, uh, clarifying and codifying, um. Uh, sort of the special permit authority and, uh. Sort of how it is apportioned between us and the the zoning board, um, would be, um, really helpful.
Uh, if if you may, Mr. Chair, I think some of the other things I would be. Uh, interested in having a conversation with members of the planning board are the use table. Uh, I think that there are a number of uses that we should reconsider as it relates to whether or not they're as a right. Or by special permit, or what that that use looks like. Um, there's a lot of uses in a lot of districts, so that I think there's a number of conversations that could be had at there. Um, additionally, I think that there's, there would be, uh, uh. Some value i- to your point as it relates to the, you know, the special permit granting authority, but also. What specifically needs a special permit versus a variance? Defining that language and making that a little more intentional, I would characterize it. Um, you know, I think that there may or may not be an appetite, but I think it'd be worth having a conversation as it relates to some of our parking ratios, specifically. If it makes sense to have the same parking ratio, uh, directly adjacent to our two commuter rail stops for other locations in town. Um, you know, I think some of those types of conversations, you know, I'm not saying I know what the end solution or end answer would want to be for all those, but I think they're conversations that are worth having. If we're having a larger conversation and there's this large recodification process. That provides a good mechanism to to have some of these conversations to planning board and potentially provide some guidance as it relates to tweaks to some of those elements. Um, you know, I think it probably makes sense, I don't know if there's a ton of like. Major changes in my mind's eye besides the the minimum loss sizes, but the dimensional guidance that we're providing in the, um, that. The table within the bylaw probably makes sense to just look at it and all kind of either nod our heads yes or or not our heads and say we want to have a conversation about some of those elements. Um, those are some of the things that come off just right off the top of my head, accessory dwelling unit being another one, I I think from my review of the bylaw previously. That it seems like we have a pretty good sense of how it works and talking to some members of ZB on the side, it sounds like it works. But it's probably not a bad conversation to have, just to double check, especially if there's some constitutional cleanup language that has to occur as it relates to that topic.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright. Bill or Matt?
Mr. Chair, I'm I'm good right now with the discussion that's going forward, uh, Jim covered. Most of the points that I'm interested in and, um. A couple that came up as well, like noise, light pollution, signage, and those are other points. That we want to make sure, um. Are worded and added in a way that. As our board and the ZBA and Conservation Commission reviews plans. We have, and maybe this is the whole point of this journey that we're jumping into, that we want to be able to. Open up or. Log on to that portion, that section, and say, you have to abide by this. So developer, attorney, that's. In front of the planning board, ZBA, or Con- Conservation Commission, we can just say, here it is, he you cannot do what you're doing. Here's the reason why we have this in our bylaw. If you want to, if you wish to go for a variance. Or whatever it might be that the bylaw reads, if it, in case there's a special permit, um, on the use group, I I think there's. There's, there's just so much to dissect and understand. Um, but in the end, I want to make sure that as a board, we have this. Bylaw, this, uh, bylaw to point to, to make sure it's, it's backed up. A one last point, and this is something that Attorney Barowski brought up too, is enforcement. You know, these bylaws are great and everything, but enforcement through, and we know building inspectional services and all that. Building inspector can go through and, and say, but, uh, as a planning board, eyes and ears on subdivisions and whatever's happening. The zoning board on what's happened, like we have these meetings and we don't want the outside of the building lit up. Uh, but then we go by it and the outside of the buildings lit up and there's no enforcement on that. So I guess these bylaws are really, um, I'm hoping they would give our boards a way to hold. Developers in check and any type of development in a smart development way, obviously. So, uh, is it just too big for us as a board and, and this meeting that you're going to have between now and May first with the chairs? Is there a way to push each of the other boards? To also provide specifics on what they want to be able to do their job easier?
Oh, I, I, I think that's. Very clearly in their interest as well as in ours. So I, I think that is, I think how they are approaching this. I mean, we, we heard Hatfield say, I've got, you know, six or 10 items that I can really see. To rewrite, to make clear for, for ease of administration and enforcement.
Yeah. Well, Matt and Jim, in your experience too, is it? If I know Matt, you and I have had these conversations in meetings and, and such about enforcement. What, what can be? Let me phrase this correctly. So the same way that we're looking at. Where does a special permit go to? ZBA, planning board? Is there also an option in the bylaws to put the enforcement side of it? If this bylaw is not followed, um, as then it's enforced by the building inspector. And it actually notes. What the repercussions are of not following it. Is that something that belongs in the zoning bylaw?
Well, uh, I, I think with enforcement, you need to have some authority. So the planning board in. ZBA, they don't have, you know, any, any teeth in it. So that's where it's left up to the building inspector, because he can, you know, he can take action and do something. And for someone, the planning board can't do that unfortunately. The ZBA, I, I don't know if they can take an action, they would need someone to do it, which would be the, they would have to direct the. Um, building inspector. So what I find one of the best things for enforcement is. Is, um, proper documentation of what should be happening out there. And, you know, there are certain towns where all the decisions are online. You can pull up and see what was supposed to have been done. And anyone. That sees that something's changed can then, you know, go to the building inspector and demand, hey. The lighting now is pointing away from, from the building onto neighbors. It's not pointed down like it's supposed to. They've resigned it where you weren't supposed to take a right turn before. They took the sign out and everyone's turning right and causing, you know, whatever. So one of the big things is having the information out there for everyone to know what should be there. That also keeps the developer and the new owner and the occupants on notice that. Oh, this is what we're supposed to be doing. Because right now, the only way to find out what is supposed to be doing is to. Go to the building inspector and have them pull the plans out.
Right. Well, I just think of, I just think of the, the amount of time that our board specifically in the last eight or 10 years that I've been part of it. And think of Gates of Greenwood and how much time we invested, and I don't want to say wasted, but it was over like what? Six or seven years? So many meetings we had, it seemed like it was like between a half hour and two hours out of so many meetings. Going over the gates of greenwoods and just how that wasn't properly, the drainage wasn't properly done. So. How do we make sure the bylaws have the information that's needed, the enforcement to back it up? And to, to save our board and other boards so much of the time when situations like that happen?
Bill, uh, what I found other municipalities and Matt probably has some e- experience and feedback from his own professional experience. But my, my, what I've seen in other municipalities is that a lot of the building enforcement is delegated explicitly in the zoning bylaw. To the building official and then it defines a series of roles, responsibilities and corrective actions. That the building in, in, of official can, can take as it relates to enforcement of the actual bylaw. And that's the mechanism that, that to Matt's point that they're empowered and designated as that enforcement official. And the powers, roles and responsibilities as it relates to what actions they can take to enforce said decisions are defined.
Yeah, and I guess that works to a point unless the, the inspector can't get out there or the inspectional services can't get there. Um, but I, I know we've also had in our subdivisions and we've had surety, cert, sureties. Where there's a certain amount of money held until. Final inspection or whatever, and then, then that developer and attorney comes in front of the board. And when the project's completed, a lot of times, uh, representative from the planning board goes out there to make sure that it was properly. Completed. And then that money is released. Is, is that something that we want to see in any type of bylaw? If it's money that actually, or some type of wording in lawyer speak, in bylaw speak that. Also looks at the pocketbook of the developers. To help. I don't know, it's, it's just frustrating and I know Matt's lived through it more than I have. Um, but it, it's just after a while, it's just like, really? A developer or contractor comes in front of us and we've had them like lie right to faces like on the board and then go out and. And like after we've reviewed stuff on site and it's just, it's just nerve wracking. It's, it's, no, no.
Yeah. Um, it's a, it's a worthwhile question to ask and, um. I think the attorney, you know, the zoning attorney, uh, Bob Rossky will be able to give us some good advice on that square too. Um, I mean, uh, practice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to just sound like I'm frustrated or disgruntled. I just want these bylaws to, to help our boards. And help the town grow in a way that it needs to.
Yeah, uh, Theo, one other completely unrelated topic that I think. Before I forget, I'd like to make sure that we include in the conversations is Attorney Bumbrowski mentioned a number of things that he felt were more. Rules and regulations based fees, for example, so you don't need two thirds town vote to change a fee for something from 25 to something else. Um, I think it would be greatly appreciated as we're going through this process, if the zoning ordinance is going to be adopted, that we understand. Where that might impact our rules and regs, um, so we can, you know, if we're going to have the zoning ordinance get passed. That we can make sure that we have a corresponding update to our rules and regs, so that there's a continuity of, you know, information and service. And then if any, we need to make any adjustments to said underlying, uh, fees, rules and regs types of information. That's more a tracking mechanism, but I think it's something that we want to voice as something we want to make sure that we're, we're following up on the backend of this effort.
Yeah, um. All right, um. Yeah, I, I, I understand, um. Yeah, we, uh. In, in our contracts, we hedge by saying, uh, by statutory rule of law like that, so that things get automatically updated. But you can't do that for rules. All right, um, that's a really good suggestion, um, uh, too. So I will, um. Uh, I'll put all this together and I will send it out, um, and, uh, and appreciate, uh. Your individual feedback, um, that, that I think will help, uh, set our agenda for. Um, this follow-up discussion with the other committees. The fourth item on our agenda is an update on MBTA communities from Jim.
Yeah, so, uh, right now, the next step is convening the working group. Uh, working group has been established and we've gotten the, uh, the draft first agenda out to the group. Um, where we're looking to educate folks who on the working group, we may not be aware of the requirements of section three A. To clarify elements as, as possible, um, for them. And then to have some high level discussions in terms of, um, some of the tools in terms of the compliance model. That our third party consultant Ezra Glenn has put together and what they indicate as it relates to the, the minimums that we would have to impose. Or institute in order to meet the minimum, um, density or, or production, or not production, but, uh, capacity of the zoning district rather. As well as an overview, um, of the existing Wakefield, uh, housing bylaws. Uh, we may or may not, depending on time, timeframes, uh, or a time allotted, be able to get into some high level discussions. In terms of where this would be more desired, you know, really there's two main options as it relates to either Wakefield Junction or Greenwood stations. Uh, so we anticipate that's going to be, um, occurring on April 4th. And then, uh, proceeding thereafter on every other week cadence until, uh, we have kind of a, a basics in terms of how everything is going to be operating. From a, from a, uh, agenda perspective, but I think that's going to be subject to change based on feedback from the group. Right now, the way we teed it up was, we hopefully will have, uh, an initial plan, uh, for distribution to the, the planning board. And then to the wider community sometime, you know, late summer, early fall.
That's really helpful. Uh, any, any questions, Bill or Matt? Or Aaron or Megan or?
I, I, I do like what, um. Attorney Barowski had said is that this new zoning district is more. Um, the future and I think this is the big thing we need to get across to people is that. There's going to be a new zoning district. It's gonna be in areas that it isn't. Going to be able to be built out fully even from day one, but down the road, years down the road. It will slowly come into play. So, and that's the whole point of this. And, and part of the education process that we, we need to do is, is let people know that things aren't going to change as soon as this goes into effect. So, I, I was kind of heartened to hear that. I think we need to keep repeating that.
And then the one other thing I would note is that I'm going to be putting together, um, updates to our, um. To the website and distributing it to Jen McDonald, um, kind of outlining the process as it relates to where we've been. And bringing some links as it relates to some of the presentations we've, we've provided in the past related to this topic, as well as kind of letting the public know. What the, the anticipated, uh, working group processes, at least from the pro, from the perspective of the. People who are on the working group and then the anticipation of the, the cadence of the work. And then the, the deliverable for, that will then be distributed out to the wire community for review and comment.
Right. That's, uh, that's really terrific. All right. Anything else from, uh, anyone, um, about MBTA communities, um? I'm really glad, uh, this is moving, moving forward and in the right way and, uh. So thank you, Jim, for, uh, and Aaron, um, uh, and everybody for move, for moving this along for sure. Um, item five is, uh, first of all, I'll start with an apology to Susan and the board. Um, I mislabeled this item, uh, on our agenda. Um, uh, this is really for us to, uh. Review, um, the materials that we received from the zoning board, uh, in anticipation of any potential con, uh, comment. That we would like to make regarding, um, the, uh, construction of a 16 unit apartment building. And, uh, mixed use, uh, uh, development at four 60 to four 72 Main Street. Um, it's not, you know, this is not a, um, this should have been under, uh, items not anticipated. But, um, so we received, uh, items for comment before the zoning board's April 12th meeting. And, uh, so if we want to discuss it now, uh, uh, or we can discuss it at April 11th, um, uh, so.
So, Mr. Chair, what exactly can we discuss? I was, um, I don't know if anybody attended a town council meeting. I think we, we were talking about a little bit before with Susan, but there was a presentation and a review. And it was really interesting to see the proposal and, um, as I stated right before our meeting started, as we were just chatting. Um, anything could be better than what's there, but what was presented could use some work. So I don't know. I think we have to wait a while till our board gets to see this, correct? I mean, this is mostly in the ZBA's hands.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, so I'm in agreement with, well, I'm in agreement with you that the, sort of the. The. What's, what's proposed really does leave, uh, uh. Yeah, there, there's, there's some real opportunity cost that's, uh, that we're, we're losing, uh, by, by what they're proposing. So.
I just, I mean, just a few points. I was surprised to see that there was just one story above the retail space. Uh, residential and where there's an opportunity for more units, whether they're apartments or condos. Um, the connection, uh, this, I mean, as you come into Main Street, the Americal is on the, on the left. Uh, you have the, the new banks, Anton Dair and then a couple of stores, sweep bay and then bang, there's this. One store, all this a little poked up, but one story building, why it backs up, I guess, to really. Understand the possibilities, we did a walk and Aaron, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we did a walk with, uh, ULI. So the Urban Land Institute, they, it was an excellent walk. Uh, Theo, I can't remember if you were there, but we, it was an excellent walk that we went through and they had all this. Just good conversation about what could be there, what could happen, a connection to the bike path that's behind and what that means for the alleyways. That are set up, uh, between these buildings. It's just a, a real interesting sight and I, I think it was, it looks like from the presented plans. That it's such a missed opportunity for especially the type of architecture and even during the meeting, some of the town council, uh, members. Asked about different materials that can be used from brick to whatever. So it was an interesting conversation to listen to. I, I, I would, I would suggest that the board members look at the video from last night's town council meeting just to get a, a. A preview of it.
Uh, that, that's helpful, um. Yeah. Uh, Megan, uh, Matt or Jim?
I, I've got nothing to, but I think that site's kind of limited, so there's, there's not a lot of, uh. Lot of space to put, you know, many more units than I think what they've already crammed in there, to tell you the truth. There, there's a place for parking there and it's, it's kind of limited and I think they have some other site concerns that would prevent them from doing much more. So.
All right, um, that's, that's really helpful. Okey doke, um. Uh, there are sixth and final item on our agenda is items not anticipated by the chair. Um, so I will open it up to all of y'all, um. We've had a, I, I really appreciate our discussion, um, this evening.
So, uh, the only, I've got a couple items, the, um. The signs, uh. About the sign, the street name. Change by law, um, I think that really should be posted on our website, so it's out there. So everyone can review it, um, I think it was on there before, taken down, so. I'm I'm an advocate putting all the information out there so people can see it ahead of time, so. I don't know if that can be put on there. Uh, and then my other question was, where are we with the subdivision rules and rights formatting? It's been a while since we've discussed this, so I don't know what, where that stands. After I I did my attempt of of trying to format that, so.
Oh, I could speak to that, I don't, I don't want to say it was just pushed aside, but it was pushed to the bylaw review committee. To see what type of format we could use and instead of spending our time. Which I'm about, I was a third of the way, two thirds of the way, I can't remember, but doing the reformatting, everything that you added. Is updated, but all the rest of the formatting and how that fits in with. The indents, the the way it's set up, just, I can't get that to work in Microsoft Word, so. I know we heard back from um Dan Lieber from the bylaw review committee. And Theo, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe he said just put it into Word and it will be reformatted. For um. The by, for the upcoming bylaws, that, that, is that right?
Yeah, um, and uh, it was, uh. Yeah, it wa- wasn't as a. Concrete a suggestion as I think we were hoping to get, so.
Well, that's, that, nothing for the, really, the bylaw review, we we do committee to even. Go through, that's, that's rules and regulations for the.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Matt, that wasn't, that wasn't the point, it was more of asking Dan, if we're going to go and reformat this and spend the time. Are the bylaws being redone in a, in a type of software or a program that you just plug it in and it reformat it easily? Okay, to get it to look like what's on our bylaw, the zoning bylaw website uh that we have, it it's, I just can't get it there.
Yeah, yeah.
I I think that was um, and basically formatted and.
Hmm.
Um, being dense were all put in, you know, they were, they were hard carriage returns, I don't.
My gosh, I know, and their tabs and their spaces, and I'm just like.
I know.
Every line.
So.
No, okay.
So, yeah, I I think that's just a limitation of uh, of Microsoft trying to. And and the Clippy coming out trying to help you and uh, that's why Clippy's dead because it's just throwing crazy, so.
Right.
So, um, so, uh. Um, Matt, you've been, you know, tortured by this document, Bill, you've been tortured by this document. Um, the uh, um. The uh, um. Uh, I will start to clear, um, Bill, uh, it's my, it's been my turn for a while, so. Yeah.
Alright, I'm hoping that we can get to a point where at least we can send it on to engineering for them to start reviewing because it's going to. I know it's going to take them a while to go through it, so.
Okay.
But. I'd like to keep moving this forward somewhat, so.
Is um, our May twenty third meeting too late for you? Or June thirteenth?
No, it's not too, I mean, I don't need to have a hard deadline, it's just, I'd rather get this done. Before I'm off the board, which I I gotta check my calendar, but, you know. Still think it's a few years, but let's, let's not use that as a, as a deadline, so.
Right, 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 okay, um. Alright, um, well. Yeah, um, I'm someone who only works by deadlines, apparently, um, so, um.
Well, I I think you should, you should get into this before you try to set any deadline because, yeah, it's, it's. It's like you said, it's just about killed myself, Bill, so, um, you can, you can choose a deadline, but. I'm not going to hold you to it, just put it down.
Well, that's, that's very kind, um, alright, um. So, I don't, Bill, you'll just email me the word document.
Oh, I can, definitely, I I, yeah, that's fine, I'll do that.
Stick my fingers in my hand, um.
Why, uh, just to say, I haven't done anything since I sent you the last one on it, so.
Okay, alright, um, alright, alright.
If you don't have it, let me know.
Yep.
Um, one thing, just sorry, falling back on what Matt was talking about in terms of the posting of the. Um, the street naming, renaming, um, is the last, I I I'm corresponding with Jen McDonald anyway regarding. The MBTA three A multifamily overlay district, so I'm more than happy to pick that up and have her. Put that on the website, I just want to make sure the the last version that we have is the version that was um pushed to us. By the bylaw review committee, um. Approximately, let me double check where my. Do we have that last policy, is it, was that the eleven fifteen? Version of it?
No, the, the document that um. We approved and we sent uh to town council, um, has a. Um, it says, proposed street name change by law, PB approved to uh. Uh, WBRC two, two, one, twenty-three final.
Oh, okay, thank you, I I found it, I'll I'll push that one over to the to Jen to have that posted.
Yeah, I got it, alright. Thank you, um. The, um. I only have one, one item, um, and we've, um, which is um. The open space and recreation plan uh update, um, that's proceeding, um. They want to have a survey, um, that they want to build off of. Uh, Vision twenty thirty and uh, uh, other. Other public surveys and then, um. Uh, they do want to have a public meeting, um, I think, which would be at the end of the day, um, and. That's all there is, uh, on that square, um. Oh, yeah, Aaron, please.
And I, um, it's Megan, I had a question in regards if we made any decisions for the. April twenty fifth meeting, if we determined if we were just going to skip it or if we were going to reschedule it prior to the. Twenty fifth, since that's the um, election day, and so we can't have our meeting on that date, I didn't know if we made a decision.
Thank you, um. Uh, I had presumed, well, that, that's actually a really great question, um. I did presume that we were just going to skip it, but I know that potentially causes uh problems for. Someone who wants to file de- definitive plans, is that right, Aaron?
If I remember correctly, I don't think we could have it anyways on an election day, um, I think I ran into this before. Um, that we're not able to have like a public hearing or anything like that on that day.
Yeah, but we can't even move it to the twenty fourth. Um. Cause we wouldn't have enough time for public notice, right?
Yeah, so they would just have to wait, um.
Okay.
And I've been pretty clear with them on that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, so, um. I. Um, uh, at the moment, I'm, we're going to presume we're canceling, um, unless. Uh, something, well, we will be canceling on the twenty fifth, um, if something else comes along that needs uh immediate attention with. Um. Schedule another, another meeting, um, by, uh, by April eleventh. Thank you. Alright, um, not hearing any other uh items, um, I would uh welcome uh a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Bill, did, what, did you want to bring up the the open meeting law?
I was debating on that and I can, yes, so first of all, I want to thank um. Susan and Aaron for keeping us up to date on our open meeting, our notes and the agendas, because it's really important. Um, I received a memo earlier this week. For an open meeting law complaint that was filed on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and this has to do with the Northeast Metro Tech School Building Committee. Um, they started meetings, um, November of twenty eighteen and through September twenty twenty. They um did not complete their agendas and submit them for all the meetings. And they did not pull together meeting notes. For all of those meetings or post them or even make aware to the towns and cities that needed to vote on certain pieces. Like the selection of the parcel of land where the voc is being built, proposed, um. And so this is, this is a serious thing and I received this uh earlier this week, like I said, oh, it's a Tuesday, I received it over the weekend. And I just wanted to bring up, first of all, thank you for, you know, Susan and Aaron for keeping everything on track for us. And I just, this is a big deal, this could push back the construction start. Of the Northeast Metro Tech, so it it, I'm not sure what's going to happen, but I just wanted to bring that up as. Something that I received, um, I don't think it was sent to me just as a, the person who sent it. Um, knows I'm on the planning board, so I I I felt somewhat obligated to share this, I shared it with. Um, the chair and with Aaron Kokinda earlier today and I just wanted to make sure that, um. We keep our meetings open, so when, just, just to keep this legit too, if any of our planning board members. Receive something like this, um, is, is the right thing to do to send it directly to the chair and to the director of. More planning, economic development, community development, uh, but like, what's the, what's the correct thing for us to do? Process.
When we receive what?
I don't know, I re- it was. I.
So someone's alleging that their meetings weren't posted or something, or and and that's.
Well, there's an open meeting law complaint sent, but when we receive stuff like this that could affect plans in town and decision making. Is it our duty to bring that to the chair, to the director, like what?
I I I, I think if someone's making a complaint, that would go to, obviously. We have no authority on that, so it would have.
No, no, I'm sorry, Matt, sorry if I, I don't want to be misleading on this, it wasn't sent to me to deliver it to someone. It's, was sent to me. To share with the board, um, but it was sent to me. A PDF that was sent to, for the complaint, to the, to the Attorney General.
Okay, I I I, I wouldn't, I don't know if it's something we should really be discussing because it's a. You know, it it doesn't involve us.
Right.
We have no, so I I don't know if it's something, just because we, we get information from people that we need to. Suddenly bring it into the board, I guess.
That's, that's where I'm kind of torn, it's, you think of like the emails that would come to the general mailbox for the planning board when we have that. And what we would do, like, how do we address them? I I feel in some ways this, this falls under that same category, like, what do we do with it? I feel if we do nothing with it, it's, so as an architect, if I go to observe a site. Uh, I can't tell the contractors to do different things, I can't give directions, I can't supply means and methods. But if I see something that professionally, I need to report. Because if I take a picture and in this picture, there's some type of, whether it's OSHA or. Not being built the right way or is going to cause construction delays, I need to report that. As a professional, so is our board obligated to report? Something that comes up that we just, that's provided to us, that could change the way that. We make judgments or decisions. It's a bigger question, this is just an example, what do we do with this information?
Yeah, it, it is only just a complaint at this point.
I think it's been filed, I I don't know if it's been filed with the AG.
Yeah, but it hasn't been adjudicated yet, so, um, there's no. Um. The, yeah, so I, I think, um. Yeah, I mean, like, if if we were in your situation and in the course of our review. Uh, we noticed something egregious, then it would be incumbent upon us to file the complaint or or notify others, uh. I think it's, um, I agree with Matt that, um, when it is adjudicated, we should be notified, um. Particularly if it uh does affect uh a decision that we've made or potentially, you know. It will come back to us, um, so.
Okay, I just, it's, it's one of those things, like, when we had all those emails that would come in, how do we address them? Responding to them or or not, so. So when we do receive as individual planning board members or a chair of the board, if we are receiving information. Um, do we pass it on to the director or do we ignore it, is it our own decision to make?
I I think if it was a matter that was before the planning board, that would be one thing, but if it's. If, if we have no jurisdiction in anything. It's not really, you know. I don't think it's appropriate to bring up before the board because we have no say in it, so we may be. Telegraphing and publicizing it and I think could potentially be misinformation too. So, we need to be careful with that also.
Yeah, and that, that's, like, this is an example, we, as a board, had a special meeting and wrote it, um. Wrote to the ZBA about the same project, so I'm just. I guess I just want to make sure we're following the correct open meeting laws and making sure. Um, that we're not. Jeopardizing any of the work we're doing.
I'm, I'm glad you raised the question, um, I do think, um. Uh, individual emails sent to individual planning board members, um, uh. In general, shouldn't, shouldn't be forwarded, you know, unless we've, uh, you know, we, we felt there was really good cause to do so, um, I think. Formal, uh, and and, and, um, obviously, none of us would reply to. Uh, an individual email, uh, representing that it's just, you know, uh, speaking for the board at that point. Um, for, I think the, the only way we would, we would respond would be email sent to the planning board email. Um, and, um, you know, thinking about all the public comments, you got about two hundred to four hundred quarts pallet. Um, in that, that barrage, um, you know, you know, really, you know, isn't it more about. Um, acknowledging receipt and, uh, you know, and, um. Uh. When, you know, referring to people that come to the public meetings, because that's the only way to respond.
Well, that's one thing I had, the, the other thing I have is that I did speak up at two public meetings this week, on the last week. And I made sure I addressed them, speaking as a, um, not for the planning board, but I spoke at the ZBA meeting. Uh, and I spoke at the town council meeting last night and both were regarding, um, the lack of, um. Separated bike lanes for. Separated bike lanes for, um. The proposed plan for the Northeast Metro Tech. Or any type of pedestrian path that would provide a safe route to school.
Thank you, and you did bring that up, um, uh, at our other discussion about, on the twenty-first.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, a really helpful discussion, so thank you, Bill.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, um, no, with no other business, uh, is there a a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Alright, thank you, Matt.
Second.
Alright, alright, we've got it, we've got a two-way tie, um, alright, uh, all in favor? Yeah. Um, uh, Jim Hogan?
Yes.
Megan Metasali?
Yes.
Alright, Matt Lowery?
Yes.
And Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, yes, um, so, um, thank you, everybody, and. Uh, we really tackled a lot in terms of uh looking ahead, so I I appreciate it. So, I'll be following up with y'all, um, uh, over the next, uh, tonight or tomorrow, um, so.
Thank you, Theo.
Alright.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Have a great.
Yeah, you too. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, everybody.